Why should I be worried with a little block, black box with an antenna sticking up in front of all of us?
Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, January 31st, 2011. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner DePietro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivala.
Here.
Everyone else present tonight, Your Honor?
Thank you. Next up is agenda changes and I, we need to have something removed from the agenda. It's under New Business Number Nine, Report and Recommendation from the City Manager regarding the wayfinding signs for Northern Michigan University. Apparently, M.DOT found a glitch in our resolution we were going to pass, so they asked that we put this off till our next meeting. So, if I could have a motion to... Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we remove Item Nine from the agenda.
Support by Commissioner DePietro. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And then, I guess I'd like to see if someone would be willing to make a motion to add just a brief discussion on the potential Kennecott Trucks or the Kennecott Mineral Mining Company adding Marquette as a road, so... Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion to add an item concerning Kennecott Mining Company's potential trucking through Marquette.
Okay, do we have support? Commissioner DePietro supports. Any comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Oh. That's right.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Hold on. Easy. Do we have any other changes to the agenda? Commissioner St. Ange?
I'd like to ask that we place on the agenda an opportunity to discuss the current city practice of requiring prevailing wage, contractual requirements as part of any projects, any capital projects worth more than $50,000. Does that make sense?
Do we have...
I talked about it the other day, so I'd like to, I'd like to have that discussion if you don't mind.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Snyder seconds it. We're going to list that as Item Number 12. We're going to move the Kennecott discussion into the Number Nine spot. If everyone's following at home, we'll prompt you as we go. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Do we have support? Commissioner Neme supports. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Four announcements. I'm going to just announce the positions that we have open on our volunteer committees and boards. We've got, you know, it seems like every week we whittle away at these, but here they are. Got one opening on the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one opening on the Elections Board, one opening on the Investment Advisory Board, two openings on the Local Officers Compensation Commission, one opening on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and one Market Schools Representative position on that board. Police-Fire Pension Board, one opening. Public Works Advisory Board, four openings. Senior Service Task Force, two openings. We're getting close to filling that. And Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, one opening. So, if you have any interest in volunteering and serving your city, you can certainly go to our website, mqtcty.org, or see the City Manager's Office. That's all I have for announcements. We're going to get into our first business action, and that's a public hearing regarding the State Revolving Fund and Drinking Water Revolving Fund project plan. Because this is a public hearing, it's a requirement that we, on this particular issue, that anyone that comments or if anyone is actually present, we're supposed to have names and addresses recorded. The clerk has that, so if anyone wishes to speak on this, if you could, as always, give your name and address for the record. And then, we're going to pass that around. If you could...
That's just for the hearing, Frank.
Put your name and address on it. It's just one of the requirements of the state for this, so... With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this issue? Anyone wishing to address the commission? Oh. I suppose we could have you read the agenda background, Dave.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a public hearing for the SRF and DWRF project plan for Lake Shore Boulevard and Brule Road. Background, on April 15th, 2009, the City Commission unanimously adopted a resolution approving a five-year project plan to fund capital projects utilizing the State Revolving Fund, SRF, and the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, DWRF programs, which are made possible through low-interest financing and federal stimulus funding. As part of the Commission's Special Budget Meeting of April 28th, 2010, the Commission approved the Lake Shore Boulevard Island Beach Road project for year two of the five-year, a five-year approved project plan for potential SRF and DWRF funding. In addition, Brule Road was moved from year six to year two to take advantage of the funding source since this project had been approved by the City Commission during the 2009-2010 budget cycle. Recently, staff learned that additional information is required for the Lake Shore Boulevard project and that a new public hearing must be held. Without a second public hearing by the end of January 2011, the City of Marquette would lose the opportunity to utilize SRF-DWRF funding for the third quarter funding if such an option would be approved by the Commission. While SRF/DWRF funding is only one of the funding options for this project, with bond funding, special assessment, alternative finance, and not proceeding with the sewer and water improvements being others, conducting a public hearing is mandated by the state in order to be considered for SRF and DWRF funding to keep this option open. The Commission reviewed this at their meeting of December 20th, 2010, the necessity of public hearing and scheduled a public hearing for this evening. Fiscal effect, pending funding source, recommendation, approve a resolution, adopting a project plan for water and wastewater system improvements for Lake Shore Boulevard and Brule Road, and designate an authorized project representative, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll open the public hearing up. Is anyone wishing to address the commission? Anyone wishing to address the commission? Okay, seeing none. Keith, do you want to add anything?
Good evening. I'm not Dennis this time, I'm Keith, so... It's a personal joke. Due to some state changes as far as their internal operations, we have to do a public hearing for the 3,000 block of Lake Shore Boulevard for a possible SRF loan type of funding. This was originally approved in the five-year plan, but like I said, due to some changes, we have to go through this process again. So, we're looking at water and sewer improvements for the 3,000 block of Lake Shore Boulevard. On the project study area, if you can look on the screen. Okay, there we go. Look on the screen there. Project area, I was going to wear a wireless mic, but as you can see, that didn't work out, so I'll have to talk from here. If you look over here, you can see the project basically starts at Lake Shore Boulevard-Peter White Drive intersection, proceeds west all the way to the west dead end there. And then, there's another portion where we have a cross-country water main that proceeds from the dead end of Lake Shore Boulevard, crosses through the LSNI-CCI We Energies property over to a dead-end water main at the end of Powder Mill Road. As you can see, this area has certain characteristics as far as wetlands, river crossings. We do have Lake Superior nearby. They have a nice sandy beach there. And we'll kind of get into some more of the environmental parts later. The study covered basically the water main replacement and extension, sewer main extension under the street that's planned for reconstruction. We're going to look at the fire flows. We're going to look at water quality. We're going to look at the service to the public for the sanitary sewer system. And we're going to look at some environmental, I wouldn't say issues, but ways we're going to try to help the environment by ways we're going to be dealing with different ways of construction. Project plan approach, as we looked at system deficiencies, those being basically fire flows and water quality. Also, there is at present no public sanitary sewer, but there is private septic fields and systems up there for the residents. We had to look at priorities, priorities being water quality, fire flows, also being able to serve the public with a public type of sanitary sewer system. We looked at alternative solutions such as trenchless technology, where we're looking at directional drilling. We looked at some of the cost opinions and options, and there was also, we computed the user fee impacts. On the record, recommended water main upgrades. At present, we have a 1918, 1931, four-inch sandcast iron main. We are planning on replacing this with an eight-inch ductile iron main. In order to achieve the correct fire flows per ISO requirements, we do have to loop it through the We Energies, CCI, LSNI, and BLP properties across Dead River to Powder Mill Road. The water main loop consists of eight-inch HDPE, which is part of the directional drilling trenchless technology. And there'll be places where we can do a little bit of open cut with eight-inch ductile iron piping. We're going to look at fire. Hydrant spacing is required by the fire department, which is about 400 feet. We will be providing a check valve on Lake Shore Boulevard down just south of Dead River there, and this will allow us to properly regulate the flow and circulation. Here's just a drawing here of the proposed water main area. Basically, we're starting here, Peter White Drive, Lake Shore Boulevard, continuing to the dead end here. If you look at the yellow hatching or line type here, that's directional drilling that we're going to be doing. Reason for doing that is we're trying to minimize any disruption to wetland areas here. Through here, we have an issue with CCI, LSNI with the railroad operation, so we're going to have to do trenchless technology there. And then, also when crossing the Dead River, there's wetlands on each side plus the river itself. So, we're minimizing any type of environmental impact that we can on this project. Recommended sanitary system upgrades. Like I said, we want to try to provide a public sanitary sewer system for an area that's already serviced by septic. The new system will be extended from Lake Shore Boulevard-Peter White Drive. It will extend all the way to the west end of Lake Shore Boulevard. The system will be composed of an eight-inch PVC gravity main, but there is an area where we can't proceed with gravity completely, so we've got to look at a four-inch PVC force main situation. And the next slide here, I can give you a better idea where that's going to be at. If you look at the slide here, basically, we can get gravity from here, basically about over in this area here. From that point, we run out of, run out of ground cover, basically. So, what we have to do is create an artificial low point where we're going to have a lift station, which is going to be in this area right here, if you can see it right. So, we'll have the sewer flowing this way and partially this way, then it'll be pumping up this way to the gravity system, and the rest of the way out will be gravity flow. Just an idea of what the pump station's going to look like. It's going to be very inobtrusive to the area. You won't really notice a whole, a whole lot with it. It's compact, economical. Everything can be accessed from the top. So, you won't be able, I mean, you'll see it there, but it isn't going to be sticking out where it's real noticeable. Fire flow requirements. As I said, there are guidelines for the Insurance Services Office, which is called the ISO. This is used by mostly all municipalities nationally, especially by the fire departments. In this situation here, with the way the structures are located, the distance between the structures, the materials the structures are made out of, it's recommended there should be at least 1,000 gallons per minute for fire protection. This goes hand in hand, not only with the ISO, but also our water master plan is created by our consultant, Eris Lewis in Norris and May back in 2002. Just for example, the east end of the system, which would be near Peter White Drive, there's only 300 gallons per minute. If you look, go at the very west part of the system, west end of Lake Shore Boulevard, there's only 175 gallons per minute. So, it's definitely lacking in that area for fire control. Water quality. This was another issue we had to look at. Water quality is based on the amount of times the water actually sits in the pipe. There's different parameters that can, that can degrade your water as far as the quality. But there's also ways of maintaining water quality, and that's by the use of chlorine, piping materials, and making sure you have a pretty steady flow through there. The existing pipe out there now, like I said, is a four-inch sandcast iron piping. I think most of you have seen my display where I do show different types of piping and the corrosion you can see on the inside. When you start having that issue, you start not only losing your flow, but you also start getting into issues with water quality. Quality can't be maintained with zero or low residual insufficient flow or corroded piping. Currently, the water system at the west end discharges continuously into the area surrounding wetlands area, and that's in order to maintain chlorine residual and water quality for that area. Next issue we looked at was access for the public for sanitary sewer. There's roughly 41 existing homes that are being serviced by their own septic systems. The average life of a septic system is anywhere from 20, 25 years. Based on our research at the county there, right now, 80% of the homes in that area have exceeded their useful life. So, some are failing, some will be failing, some have failed and been replaced already. Current regulations for a new septic system will require a mound system in this area, which does get more costly, and the reason for this is due to the high water tables. There's also concern with a close proximity to Lake Superior and the groundwater. Just as a side note here, you would think with that nice sugar sand, beach sand out there, that would be good. Actually, in this case, it's not because the contaminants go right straight through into the groundwater and they travel out. So, there could be, there is a case where too much sand is not good in this particular situation. The environmental aspect of it, of course, when you're doing construction, you're going to have dust, but that will be controlled by use of calcium chloride or by the use of water trucks. There will be temporary areas where we'll have noise. Like I said, we are going to be using directional boring trenchless technology through sensitive areas like the Dead River, wetland areas, just to minimize any type of impact to them. And this is also looks, is looked on favorably with the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers also. We're looking at reduction of sanitary sewer seepage to the groundwater by the removal of these septic systems just due to the fact that the groundwater is so close, it's shallow in depth there, and Lake Superior is so nearby. I know this has been, I've had people come in and ask me about this, sort of access during construction. We have been in communication with LSNI as far as how to maintain some type of access for the residents when construction does start. We have like a phased approach. Basically, well, there's an existing, there's not much to it, but we'll have to rough grade a road through here. Probably put some subbase modified or gravel down here to make a temporary access road to it reaches over to the LSNI's service drive here. But there'll be phases in which, when this is closed down, people can drive around over to here to get to this area and vice versa as far as a different phasing and access to Lake Shore Boulevard from a temporary access drive. Total initial capital costs, based on the current engineer's estimate, which includes construction materials, testing, permit fees, miscellaneous charges from BLP for holding power poles and so forth. You're looking at, just for the sanitary sewer and related, $920,000. Capital costs for the water main and related is 1.1 million. I do know during our original budget meetings, there was an interest in trying to get this reduced, which I'm all for, reducing the cost of a project. We did reduce it probably almost $800,000, $900,000. This was due to the fact that we didn't encounter any bedrock when we did our soil borings. We did not encounter any peat in the ground at all. We were minimizing the storm sewer piping that's needed. So, all these together ended up in a savings. And as you know, in past years here, we've, you know, come out, come down a little cheaper too when the bidders start bidding the contractors on their costs. So, I would hope this would even come down a little bit further. Project financing options. There's different options here that can be looked at as far as financing this project. One being the MDEQ revolving fund loan for water and sanitary sewer. Currently, the interest rate, I believe, is 2.5%, and they want you to have it for 20 years. I will put in, just to highlight here, as far as the water part of the revolving fund loan. We are in the contingency part of that, which means that we're in the running, but we haven't yet received or been placed into that group of people where we have been approved to get that, that loan funding right now. The sanitary, we have. We'll know more mid-February if we're going to receive or be in, out of that contingency group and be into the group that's been approved for a funding for the water. You can also look at a regular municipal bond for your water and sanitary sewer. Interest rates currently 4.8 for 10 years. There's also the option of a special assessment per our annual fees. It's at $38.27 per frontage foot. This would typically, for average homeowner out there, would be about $3,200. That could be more or less depending on how wide your lot is. Now, keep in mind, this won't cover the total cost of the sanitary. There'll still have to be, and Gary can probably get in this later here, but there's still going to be costs to the homeowner to replace their sanitary from their home to our sanitary sewer lateral that's going to be stubbed in from the street. There'll be costs associated with that. There'll be costs associated with them having to abandon their septic fields and tanks. And then, there's also, I guess, the other option of service rate increases. So, just in a nutshell here, as far as financing scenarios, option one, you can utilize SRF-DWRF in a regular bond. Option two is option one plus special assessment. Option three, all regular municipal bond. Option four, no bonding, all rate increases. As another side note, the typical new user of the sanitary sewer system along Lake Shore Boulevard, this is just going to be on the average. It depends on how much water they use, but it's going to be $40 a month that they would be paying for a fee back into the system to have access to our public sanitary sewer. Here's just the impact of what the typical cost of construction might be for the average resident. This is just average. If you're going to look at SRF-DWRF loan, you're looking at a monthly increase for user rates of a dollar, $1.01 a month for sanitary and a $1.08 a month for water. Now, if you look at doing a regular municipal bond, you're looking at basically almost double that. And also, as part of this, I need to just do a quick little blurb about Brule Road. Brule Road, like we said, we had mentioned this during the budget process. We were going to try to see if we could at least get on the list as far as getting a DWRF loan for that and getting a lower interest rate. So, as part of this, I just have to do a quick blurb just to make the state happy. I'm going to call up a drawing here, hopefully. Then again, maybe not. Here's just a construction drawing of Brule Road. Just basically, it's going to be from Joliet down to Schoolcraft. This was approved during the 2010 budget. We are leaving the sanitary sewer in place. We're hoping to slip-line that. The water main is going to be replaced due to it being undersized. Also, this whole area has a bad habit of having water main breaks due to the soils. So, we will have to probably undercut some of those soils, three or four feet because of the nature of the soils, to provide not only a good trench for the water main, but also a good base for the road. And here's just an aerial view of the area. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Commissioners, it is your pleasure. Commissioner Neme?
I would move that we approve resolutions adopting a project plan for water and wastewater system improvements for Lake Shore Boulevard and Brule Road and designate an authorized project representative.
Got a motion by Commissioner Neme, support by Commissioner DePietro. Commissioner Neme, additional comments?
Just want to mention that in the resolutions, we are also adopting all, option number two, the bonding with the limited special assessment.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things I wanted to ask Keith before he left Electurn, if they could pass that speaker over to you?
Yes, sir.
You were saying that there would be a charge from Leighton Power to replace poles, telephone poles?
Not usually to replace...
Electrical poles, I think.
Yeah. Not to use, not to replace per se, but in cases where they have to be held up or maybe moved over a little bit because of utilities in the way, we do get charged for that.
Is there any chance of that going underground, those utilities?
I guess there's always a chance of that, but that's up to a different motion by the Commission.
Could I ask the City Manager to comment on that, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have had a discussion with Kirby Gentilla at the BLP. That area is currently not an underground utility district, and we have not had any citizen feedback yet requesting consideration for underground utilities. So, at this point, with the exception of what Mr. Gentilla shared with me for the overhead... utilities would be discretion in trying to make sure that any poles or anything above ground is located, not on the lakeside, but on the other side of the street. There's currently no plans that address underground utilities in that area.
Okay, that answered that question. May I ask one more, Your Honor?
You bet.
One of the reasons I'm in support of this is, one of the residents that been asking for over 40 years, he's lived, him and his wife, lived on Island Beach Road for about the last 60 years. And the last 40 years, he kept bugging me all the time that he would like to have water and sewer out at his location on Island Beach Road. And when the residents wanted it 40 years ago, the city didn't want to do it. And then when the city wanted to do it 20 years later, the residents weren't ready for it. Now, 40 years later, we're all on pretty much the same page. And I think with the economy, the way it is, I think this would be a perfect time for us to do it, because I really feel that we're going to get a bang for our buck from any bids that we're going to get from contractors. And, and I feel that about 95 percent of the residents out on Island Beach Road are willing to accept this. So I'm, this is why I'm going to support this recommendation. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
We, we had a public hearing and many of the people living on, on Lake Shore Boulevard or Island Beach Road did request that we go forward with this project. It really, it really is a unique situation where they are not in a good situation as far as water goes because of fire flows or for firefighting purposes, as the city engineer pointed out. And the fact that the system is not looped also affects the quality. And I think it's also a very important fact that, that the people now using septic systems will, will be able to hook up to the sewer system. And being along Lake Superior, that's certainly an important move. So I would support this too.
All right. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I wonder if the reason that we hadn't had any resident support for underground utilities or underground utilities is because nobody realized it. I mean, when we think about it, we didn't put an ad in the paper, we didn't say, hey, guys, there's an opportunity here to put the utilities underground. What do you think about it? And maybe we should do that. And I would suggest holding this, this vote in abeyance until such time, perhaps another meeting, that we can have the residents actually come forward and say they would support it or would not support it.
I thought this had to be approved in January.
This has to be approved tonight.
Is it possible to do a conditional approval then that would allow the resident at some point to come in and say, we want to have this area as an underground utilities area?
I would think that, you know, what we're approving tonight in regards to the SRF and DWRF really probably doesn't hold our feet to the fire on where the utility corridor is going to be or how they're put in. I think that discussion can still be made, but the, the business we're after tonight is actually approving.
I'll certainly vote to, to support the motion, but I would like the opportunity, I think, for the residents to come forward with their feelings regarding underground utilities, so of course we can maximize it and have it done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, did you want to say something?
No, I thought you were going to call for a roll call vote when you got to that point.
I was going to. Okay. Any other comments? Well, I, I guess I take maybe a differing view on the, the utilities being underground, not to bang on that, but, you know, we were at a meeting here a week or so ago that said that it costs 10 times as much to do them underground as above ground. Eventually, that cost gets passed on to the rest of the rate holders. It, it really does. And, and I, I think the fair question would be, do these residents want to pay the difference between overhead and underground? I think that's a realistic question to ask them. And if, if they want to, great, we'll do it. But I, I just don't see, you know, spreading that cost to the rest of the residents. We're already adding basically a $2 a month charge to everyone's water and sewer bill to do this project. And I intend to vote for it, I, you know, but it's already a very expensive project. I, I don't think I could support making it more expensive. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't really mention that we'll certainly make the BLP aware of that. Pending any other kind of commission resolution to turn that area into an underground utility district, that's something that's completely within their authority to decide. And I'll, I'll speak to Mr. Gentile and encourage him maybe to reach out to those residents and find out what their interests are.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I just wanted to, to make certain that the number that went out as to what the cost would be, would be a true and accurate number, because I believe the 10 to 1 ratio was referring only to trunk line construction and not to construction that would be serving a neighborhood. So I think that, you know, when the BLP goes out and says, here's what it would cost, it would be an actual cost and not simply an estimate pulled out of the air. But thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner DePietro?
Yes.
Commissioner Neme?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Ange?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Keevila?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, next up, our second item of business is a presentation. Pam Christensen is here from the award-winning Peter White Public Library. So Pam, welcome. And you brought some treasure from Washington DC, so.
This is the medal. There's the actual medal here, which people have said, you know, we all have to take turns wearing around here. And the certificate. And this will be on display at the library after it gets done traveling around the county.
Is it like the Stanley Cup?
Yes, sort of.
Everyone gets to have it for a day?
And I also pass out to each of you a copy of this brochure that is produced each year by the Institute for Museum and Library Services of the award. Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go. This brochure is published each year by the IMLS and it shows the various winners, five museums and five libraries, so you can see what type of company we were in. Another thing that's nice about this brochure is it lists our partners that have helped us with the programs that we used for substantiation that, you know, we were deserving of this
Well, we are truly blessed to have that library in our community and we all know that very well. So thank you and I hope you enjoyed your trip, meeting the first lady.
It was great.
Thank you for coming, Pam. Next up, we have a presentation from Mona Lang, representing our award-winning downtown. Mona, welcome.
I think it's on now, yeah. This is Tom Veer. He is the chairperson of the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors. And together, we're going to talk a little bit about the upcoming plan development and TIF financing plan that goes with that plan, our process and how we move forward. And this has been about a year-long process. In the summer, as you know, we brought in a consultant that worked with us, worked with the community. We had a work session with the city commission, planning commission. And so it's been quite a lengthy process. And it has, I think, really been good for, for us to relook at what we've done, look at our accomplishments and look at what we have left to do. Some of the, I'm not going to bore you with the details, but I do, I think you all got this book. If you didn't, I apologize for the size of it. But I, we did want to make sure that you had not only the current plan, but that you had the history and the background in a concise format. The plan that we presented does integrate the elements of the city's master plan as well as the recommendations that came from the Land Development Code and from the Smart Growth Consultant that was in, I think about two summers ago. And so we've looked at those recommendations as well as the recommendations that came from our consultant. We've worked with a bond TIF attorney out of Grand Rapids to help us through this process, make sure that we followed the process and the law, which is Act 197, which governs the actions of downtown development authorities across the state of Michigan. And basically, this plan is broken down into what I would call three basic components. And one of them is continued maintenance and, and I guess continued mature management of what we have already started, our initiatives, one of them being the Bluff Street parking structure, which needs a considerable amount of restoration, probably about $800,000 worth of restoration to continue the lifespan of that parking structure. Second priority that was identified is Barregue Avenue. Barregue Avenue has become a frequently traveled, a lot of traffic, a lot of development. And it's also a gateway into the New Founders Landing development. So some streetscape, undergrounding of utilities and infrastructure and parking reconfiguration. And then also continued management of the parking and evaluation of current parking in the downtown and future parking. One of the first priorities would be to bring in a parking consultant. We haven't had a, a good parking analysis since 1995, which was way before I was with the Downtown Development Authority. And so it's prudent to really bring someone in that understands how we can move forward to better serve not only parking, but transportation within the downtown, flow of traffic between downtown and other areas in the city. And also look at some potential revenue analysis as far as the parking system to make it and help keep it self-sustaining. I guess the second element that we've looked at were what we'd call emerging techno, or emerging initiatives, and that would include the farmer's market. The farmer's market has really become a focal point for the community. And we're going to have to look at how we're going to manage the growth of that market, possibly look at changes to the facilities to help support that market, to support our local growers and our local food industry. Another is looking at technologies such as electrical chargers for electrical vehicles as we develop new parking areas. Have to look at my notes here. We've also looked then to Jackson Cut, the Jackson Cut area. We've, we've been talking about improvements there from when I go back and look at old notes that goes back to the early 80s. And that area then could be used, there's some storefronts now that front that. That area too, we've looked at expanding the potential of doing our, an artist market there on the weekends to complement the farmer's market and would call it Art in the Alley. So those are some, some ideas that we've had. And some other things that we've looked at is, we've talked about future technologies, emerging technologies. And then third, the third component of this is, I guess I would call it a wish list or a, it's, the, the, the plan is flexible enough to allow for opportunities as they come up. If we can find property owners that we can possibly partner with, with a public-private partnership to build some parking structures and include some mixed-use development with those. And also on the west end of the develop, on the west end of the district, to really find a way to help support some business development on that end. There is a lack of public parking in that area. And we believe that by providing some public parking, that we can help spur some development and also that that will help the Roundhouse property development, because it does, is adjacent to that area. And also some of the further out west end properties that are vacant or they're underutilized, that we think that this could also help impact other areas in the city. Tom, do you want to talk a little bit about some of our other roles?
Sure. Hello, my name is Tom Veer. I'm the chairman of the DDA. I appreciate your, the audience of the commissioners and the citizens. As Mona said, I think the DDA and the TIF funding that we are looking to have approved by the commission and by the public directly affects the city and the citizens and especially the downtown and the area that encompasses. I think that the DDA and our services could greatly benefit and will greatly benefit the city in a way that can be a partnership as opposed to a, a separate service. I think the DDA can be very effective in how the funding can be used. I think Mona struck upon those points as far as the infrastructure projects that we can help with, the maintenance of the downtown and especially the, once again, the area that the TIF funding encompasses. I think we have to look at this as a very long-term plan. I think the downtown has a lot of potential. There's parking issues, there's citizen issues as far as maintenance, as far as just services that go on in the downtown. I think the DDA and the committees that we can provide for the city and for the citizens are going to be very effective. I think we can actually, it's very important, I think we can be very cost-effective with how we present what we can do with the city. And I think it's very important that everybody understands that. The TIF is a very long-funded thing. It's supported by property taxes that would be funded to, basically back to the citizens if they weren't paid for or to the city itself. But once again, I think we can be a very good partner in helping the city. And I think Mona can do a very good job and will be very effective in promoting the downtown. And I think the downtown is a jewel of the Marquette area. So I look forward to serving with Mona and I look forward to the commission approving this measure with the citizen input.
And I just have one more comment also. The, the plan is, like I said, rather lengthy with all the history. So there is a link on the city's website so that citizens can go, they can look at exactly what the city commission has in their hands. And then also the, the plan development renewal, the shorter version of it is actually on the DDA's website also. So you can go to either mqtcty.org and go to the link, or you can go to downtownmarquette.org and go to the page that is marked with the development plan. So I'm open for questions. I don't know if you want to do that now. I know that, you know, that the public hearing will be at the end of February, but we thought that it was important for you to get this information in your hands so that you have the background that you need to make the decision that you feel is right for the city. So, thank you.
Questions for Mona while she's here? No, I'm sure we'll get you when you come back. So, thank you, Mona. Thank you, Tom, for coming. Okay, next up, if I could have Christine Pasola meet me at the lectern. Well, how fitting, Christine, you're here tonight as we're starting the process of renewing the DDA TIF. You served as the leader of that group for many years. You have been a remarkable piece of the puzzle downtown from not just the Landmark Inn, your own business, but also what you helped our downtown become. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. We hope to see you back.
Yeah, I loved it. It was, I miss it already.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I've got a certificate of appreciation that reads, presented to Christine Pasola for volunteer effort on the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. So you get that and we'll give you a pin, a pen and a t-shirt.
Wow. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
I really did love every minute of it.
All right. You bet. Thank you. Okay, while I'm up here, Mr. Christopher Boz, if you wanted to come up, sir? We've got the newest member of one of our volunteer boards and committees. Christopher is the newest member of the Parks and Rec Board, so welcome aboard. We've got a pin and a pen. You'll get the t-shirt upon completing your tasks, so do you care to say a few words?
I didn't really prepare anything.
Okay.
I just wanted to meet the committee and the board and just introduce myself, really.
Okay. Well, thank you again. You bet. Okay, next up, we've got some appointments to make. I'm going to read them all off. And again, we can take them individually or all together. Got Laura Morosky, Senior Service Task Force, to fill a vacancy for a term ending 1112. Paul Ginden, Senior Service Task Force, to fill a vacancy for a term ending 1112. David Otis, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, to fill a vacancy term ending 53011. Robert Kulisek, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, for a term ending 12914. And amend the term for Jeremy Hansen on the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending 1114 and change it to a term ending 1115 to allow for more staggered terms. And I take it we've talked to Mr. Hansen and he's fine with getting another year on his sentence? Okay. All right. Jeremy's a good guy, he'll do good there, so. Again, commissioners, we can take them all at once or we can? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the list of appointments as listed by the mayor.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
No, as we always say, we're very pleased to have these people step forward and I continue to be very pleased by the number of outstanding citizens who are coming forward to take part in these positions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. And a lot of, most of the names, Honor, have served in the past on committees and I know they'll do outstanding job. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Okay, and we've got a reappointment, Mr. Rich Rosway, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, for a term ending 2114. Do we have a motion of Mr. Rosway? Commissioner Nimi?
I move that we appoint Rich Rosway, reappoint him to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February 1st, 2014.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Schneider? Second? Okay. Commissioner Nimi, comments?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Rosway for agreeing to serve another term.
Mr. Schneider, any comments?
No comments.
Any other comments by commissioners? I want to thank Rich too. This is, you know, there's a lot of boards and committees that don't take a lot of work and some meet very infrequently. This is a committee that really has some complicated issues and they perform it very well. It's one that really impresses me, so thank you, Rich, for rejoining. So with that, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. And if you could, please give your name and physical address.
Thank you, Your Honor and commissioners. My name is John Prince and I live at 3023 Lake Shore Boulevard, along with, I have a home at 3025 Lake Shore Boulevard. First of all, I want to thank you for your decision on the Island Beach, Lake Shore Boulevard Water Sewer Project. It's been a long time coming and it will be a great enhancement to the area there. I just really want to momentarily comment about the opportunity to maybe go underground with the power and other utilities out there. As you know, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Marquette Board of Light and Power and the City Commission, and it was brought up. It is being worked on a little bit right now. Some budgets are being put together, as I understand it. I've met with some Board of Light and Power staff in the process right now of conferring with residents out there. And I think your idea, Commissioner Stonehouse, to do a poll. But I think first of all, that get a true feeling of the cost is necessary first, so everybody knows what's happening with that. There are some properties there that aren't residents. Of course, the LSNI property, which owns the majority of the south side of the street, you know, what their thoughts or feelings are about it, we don't know. But they are fed from that overhead utility now, so. So anyway, I think it's a, it has a lot of merit. I think it'll be a wise thing to do. The question right now is cost and the, you know, the citizen, you know, input on that. And that's going to be worked on in the next few weeks, as I understand it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank Jeff Verito, 350 East Rid Street, Marquette, to speak on the Kennicott Route. These are my opinions. You're entitled to miss meetings for vacations so long as you review the entire meeting. However, I don't believe that you all do so. January 10th, you missed important commentary resulting from your senselessness of December 13th. It's a public inconvenience that traipse down here twice to give you the same comment. December 13th, the members stated all comments should address the entire commission. You'd accuse me of name-calling when I only use names because your predecessors requested that actual names not be used. The sole objective was to make those closest to the situations aware of whom my comments referred to. To satisfy your latest request, I refer to all members as either you or a member. In other words, the misgivings of one will be applied to you all. No new philosophy will be incorporated onto this board. To date, it's the same old, same old. With all seven in such close agreement, there's no opportunity for healthy debate nor the dissemination of more than one side of a given issue. You were mistaken December 13th if you feel your rules supersede our free speech rights or the Constitution you're sworn to uphold. An attorney who viewed the meeting found no problems with the way I addressed you. In fact, he's offered to represent me. He also suggested you show your constituents courtesy before you expect them to show courtesy toward you. You neglected to place your proposed Blaker Tower on tonight's agenda. You've sat idle letting a situation escalate that you were asked to nip in the bud at its inception. You're more concerned with saving face for yourselves than you are in protecting our historic district and scenic views. This is the direct result of your board loading. You again used a true statement to divert public attention away from the truth by stating that a BZA member in question has the qualifications to serve on that board when his qualifications were never questioned. They are superseded by the fact that you placed him there because he and others have proven to vote in accordance to your desires. You've literally placed developers onto the planning commission, one who voted in favor of the Blaker project that he fully intends to bid on. You've been asked not to waste honest tax dollars on legal expenses incurred in your frivolous attempt to uphold a flawed decision to spot-zone a six-story Isor into a tiny corner of a highly visible lot. This threat occurred because you failed to have measures in place to protect an historic Lake Shore district. You claim to be entering the 21st century, yet you're mired in the 1800s with your Blaker proposal, your communications towers, your wasted roundabout opportunity, and the barbaric clear cut just off our city's southeast corner. And congratulations to our library in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Anyone else like to comment?
Catherine Parker, Marquette.
Ma'am, I need your street address if we could.
322 West Ohio Street.
Thank you.
I'd like to share some of my concerns regarding Kennicott's transportation plans. Although Kennicott appears to have backed us into a corner, offering two unacceptable choices for their haul route, we do not have to stand by and let them dictate their terms to our community. Have alternative routes been given adequate consideration? Says who? Why haven't they been discussed publicly? Are either of Kennicott's preferred routes, County Road 595 and the 510-550 Wright Street Route, in the public's best interest? Have they asked residents if they want a new road or if they would prefer to have improvements made to existing roads? Might local officials be able to work with Kennicott on a less damaging alternative than a new north-south road and still bypass the cities of Marquette, Nagone, and Ishfoming? Was the city consulted before the DQ approved Kennicott's revised transportation plans, which they claim will allow them to drive through the city of Marquette and on US 41? Michigan's Part 632 mining law says that, quote, "A local unit of government may enact, maintain, and enforce ordinances, regulations, or resolutions regulating the hours at which mining operations may take place and routes used by vehicles in connection with mining operations." I'd like to suggest that, at the very least, the commission consider enacting ordinances regulating decibels, emissions, and hours of operations for Kennicott's haul trucks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ava Miller, 701 West Hampton Street, Marquette. And I also have some serious concerns about Kennicott, very serious, because of the lack of proper planning that's happened. There has been no full discussion about all the possible ore hauling routes. There has been, at first, it was, there was an original plan that was shoved under the table and then the Woodland Road and the 595 were found to be faulty in design, thank God. And according to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, these projects did not follow federal protection laws. And suddenly, I think what we've had are scare tactics. Okay, if we don't get that, well, then we're going to have all these trucks going through your city, so there. Well, that's not acceptable either. I believe the threat to have that, all those trucks going through Marquette, is just a threat, a manipulation to get the elected officials to side with a faulty plan. That plan has been turned down twice already. I think Kennicott is trying to get you to put in some support, to push that through and get EPA to bend a few laws to get that through. And that is a horrible thing to be doing. We need to strengthen the EPA and all the other regulatory boards, not weaken them. Kennicott's original plan of trucking ore to a railhead is the true original plan, not this going through the city. Kennicott built a spur line for its Flambo Mine in Wisconsin. It could do the same here, that of course, after honest environmental assessments and completely honest permits are done. There's also the Peschke Grade, which was originally built as an ore hauling road and is in disrepair. Originally, that road, that was going to be a rail line, but in those days, the engines were not strong enough. We now have something that could handle that. And I've heard about a red road that could be upgraded. But trucking to a railhead minimizes road traffic. The LSNI rail line can be accessed from Southern 550 or Southern 510 and 502. And there's no perfect solution here. There's still some traffic on the roads, but that would minimize it. I think rail is the best and safest way to go, and there are several options. I think Kennicott should go back to its real original plan and use LSNI to get to the Humbo Mill. It would have to build a spur line and loading area, but it did that at Flambo. Kennicott's Mr. Murphy was recently quoted in the Mining Journal saying, "We are proud of our strong environmental compliance, job creation, and economic development, and our continuing role in the community." I beg to differ. Kennicott is being sued for pollution at this so-called wonderful mine that they have in Flambo. I've also met a woman whose mother still lives there. And before the Flambo Mine was started, her mother could drink, and she and her mother could drink the water from their whale. They no longer can. However, Kennicott says that, no, it's fine, it's their flagship mine. The water is polluted. Ask the residents. This is the company we're dealing with.
Ma'am?
Yes?
You're over the three minutes.
Oh, can I come back again?
You can.
Oh, right.
You get five minutes at the end, so.
I'll finish it then. Thank you.
Good evening. You're Malankin 8 Marquette Drive. Whether it's Kennicott, or CCI, or any other company, aside from any mineral company or logging, if in fact you truly read the interpretation of EPA and all the other rules and regulations, we cannot build a road in the state of Upper Michigan anymore due to the fact that we will be killing mosquitoes, frogs, and all the other aquatic animals that we have in our swamps. And so if you read that in its entirety and it's true, then we can't do any further development in our community. And that just seems so, so silly. There has to be other alternatives in solving these issues. And rather than putting a mine name on the issue where some people agree or disagree with it, if you look at the structure of advancing our community in the future with additional routes, it is next to impossible to do that. So it becomes really unfair to put any particular mining company in that. On a more lighter note, it is fabulous. We had an incredible nequamenan this weekend with thousands of skiers in our community enjoying our fabulous restaurants and our incredible snowfall and all the activities that people participate in our community. And of course, the accolades that the library and all the other affiliated resources that we have in our community. It is just a fabulous place to live. And I realize it becomes somewhat boring, but maybe boring is good because it is enjoyable to live in this community, and I don't mind saying that because there's so many nice, happy things. Lake Shore Boulevard, I used to live there at one time, and we did not have good water and we had the septic tank out there, tanks. And that's another nice environmental improvement to have water in that community as well as fire protection and things of that nature. So there are just nice, neat things happening. And I must say, thank you for the snow plower and plowing people in our community. They've done a fabulous job in keeping our streets clear with all the snow that we've had lately. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and we'll move to our consent agenda. City clerk, do you want to read through the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2011 Commission Special Meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $2,108,396.76. Item C, adopt a resolution to schedule a public hearing for February 28th, 2011 to consider amending the Downtown Development Authority's Development and Tax Increment Financing Plans 1 and 2 with Plan 3 and authorize a clerk to sign the resolution. Item D, sell a 1995 Circo sewer router for $3,700 to Frank Hill of Collins, Ohio, being the high bid on govdeals.com. And item E, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding for the children's museum in the amount of $20,000 for the museum's operational needs.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse? None? Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First up, report and recommendation from the city manager. This is item number six, water filtration plant computer system upgrade. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette utilizes a process control SCADA computer system to operate the water filtration plant. Unlike most office or business computers, the computers at the water plant operate continuously to monitor the operations and trend data. Like any modern industry, the water plant computers control all plant operations. The up- The upgrade will address security concerns for providing a self-contained computer system with redundancy. Excuse me. Proposals were solicited from qualified integrators to provide services to complete the upgrade. The proposals for a turnkey system were thoroughly reviewed by water filtration plant staff and information technology department staff, and they have recommended Wilson Groom to be awarded meeting the specifications. It should be noted that almost six years have passed since the last upgrades, and the water filtration plant has started experiencing some equipment problems. Further, the systems currently operating is on a software platform of V 7.0 that is now outdated. The system will be upgraded to a V 10.2. Any future software support for the old version will be ending soon. In that regard, it is critical to make an investment to protect the city's water system operations. Proposals were received from Wilson Groom Control Systems, Siemens Water Technologies, and Energies Incorporated. And fiscal effect, $30,000 was budgeted from the information technology fiscal year 2010, 2011, capital outlay budget. Sufficient funds are available from savings and other capital outlay items in the technology fund to cover the remaining $3,890. Annual support fees will not be required with the upgrade in subsequent years. Recommendation, award the bid to Wilson Groom Control Systems and authorize Superintendent of Water and Wastewater to sign an agreement with Wilson Groom Control Systems for the water plant control SCADA computer system upgrade at a not-to-exceed amount of $33,890, being the low bid and meeting specifications, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Do we have a motion to start with? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll move we award the bid to Wilson Groom Control Systems and authorize the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater to sign an agreement with Wilson Groom for the water plant control SCADA computer system upgrade, and not to exceed $33,890, being the low bid.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any additional comments?
Well, as was pointed out, this was discussed in our budget meetings and was approved for purchase. It's something that's needed to upgrade our plant and to keep it working properly. This amount is slightly over the budget, the amount that was budgeted, but there is funding remaining in that technology fund to cover the additional approximately $3,900.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kurt, Kurt, could you tell us city commissioners what you know about Wilson Groom Control Systems out of Pennsylvania?
Sure. The one thing with the programming of the water filtration plant, it's a membrane technology. It's a specialized operation. I have talked to many integrators, and Wilson Groom, actually, they were the integrator in 1997, when the first, when the plant was commissioned. Working with the membranes, that type of technology, the software, all the data points, is very specialized. Very good references. He's been doing microfiltration programming since, you know, far as I know, since 1995, when the technology first came out. Talking to other integrators, they were very scared to really give a proposal because of their unfamiliarity with their, with our operation.
Okay, thank you very much on that comment. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, report and recommendation from the city manager, professional services agreement with Foley Baron Metzger regarding the Cliffstow Plant Site. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, since November 9, 2009, the city commission has had professional service agreements with the firm Foley Baron and Metzger to address environmental issues at the former Cliffstow Plant Site. The firm has proven to be a valuable asset to the city in providing assistance that has led to significant progress on the site. Therefore, staff recommends that the city commission execute another agreement with the firm for the period February 1, 2011, through December 31, 2011, in the amount not to exceed $15,000. The firm's proposed work is outlined on the attached retention agreement, and has been reviewed by the city attorney and city staff. Fiscal effect, a budget adjustment in the amount of $15,000 would be required. The money for the entire contract spanning two budget years will be taking from, taken from the 2010-2011 budget. Recommendation, approve the professional services agreement with Foley Baron and Metzger for resolving environmental liability issues involving the former Cliffstow Plant Site, in amount, in amount not to exceed $15,000 for the period ending December 31, 2011, and approve the $15,000 budget adjustment, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Nimi?
I move that we approve the professional services agreement with Foley Baron Metzger for resolving environmental liability issues involving the former Cliffstow Plant Site, in amount not to exceed $15,000 for the period ending December 31, 2011, and approve the $15,000 budget adjustment.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll second.
Commissioner Nimi, any comments?
I think the firm of Foley Baron Metzger have given us good counsel in this issue. We're making progress. That was highlighted again at our work session prior to this meeting on Cliffstow, and I think they, it's money well worth spent in this endeavor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No comments.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, report and recommendation from the city manager, senior services contract approvals. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the master purchase of service agreement for the allocation senior service programs provides for the delivery of services to older residents in the city of Marquette and townships of Chocley, Marquette, and Powell. Approximately, approximately one-half of the Marquette Senior Center budget is constituted of revenues derived through purchase of service agreements, such as the one under consideration. The city entered into a contract for senior services beginning over 15 years ago, and has been renewed annually through commission action. The current contract expired on December 31, 2010, and the county of Marquette aging services section forwarded on a new contract on January 10, 2011. Interim, excuse me, interim payments to the city of Marquette will continue pending commission action. It should be noted that this year's millage allocation represents an approximate 5% increase from the previous year's agreement. It should also be noted that reimbursements for the services will be paid on a lump sum to be allocated monthly. Fiscal effect, $251,364 in county millage are made available to provide services to our residents that would not otherwise be available. Recommendation, approve the senior services contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the master agreement to purchase senior services for calendar year 2011, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion to approve the senior services contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the master agreement to purchase senior services for calendar year 2011.
All right. Do we have support? Commissioner DePietro? Commissioner Stonehouse, any additional?
Only that, I think this has proven out to be a very good project for, for the city, and we should continue to do it.
Commissioner DePietro?
I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse's comments. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question. Are we purchasing services or providing services?
These are for services that the senior center provides to seniors within our district.
But isn't the county contracting with us to provide those services?
That is correct.
It sounds like we're buying something. I think I had the same question last year, maybe. The way this is written, it sounds like we're...
We'll give you the same answer.
...purchasing something, but we're actually agreeing to a contract with the county that we will provide these services and they will give us money.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number nine, which is a discussion that was added to tonight's agenda regarding the decision by Kennicott to list among the roads for truck usage, 550 and Wright Street, in and through Marquette. So, Mr. Verito, you had asked to speak on this issue?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, Michigan. These are my opinions. The person who was up here and spoke over three minutes during the general comments slot ought to have been offered the opportunity to reserve time to speak on the agenda item, instead of it being recommended that they speak at the end of the meeting.
She was, I noticed that.
You needed to address how the megatons of ore would be transported prior to your signing a resolution in favor of the mine. This issue is best resolved by disallowing the mine in its entirety, not by endorsing the mine. This has resulted in a potentially deadly traffic situation. By all means, refrain from placing an item of such controversial nature onto your agenda at meeting time. Note also that a lawsuit has surfaced over this company's alleged failure to keep their promises at its Ladysmith, Wisconsin mine.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Again, this was added more just as a brief discussion item, not to tackle this whole issue tonight and make any decisions, but we thought it was prudent that we at least just bring up a few issues as to the position of the city of Marquette. So, city manager, do you want to just touch on a couple issues? I know you attended the meeting last Thursday with the County Road Commission.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, actually, in attending that meeting, we noted a few different things. First off is a considerable amount of discussion and dialogue has already transpired within the community about this issue, that based on at least the candid cooperation between all parties, including Kennicott, that a strategy certainly has been underway for several years now, and that for all practical purposes, this kind of abrupt change in strategy without the same consultation that we've enjoyed in the past was unusual, to say the least. We had the chance to reiterate that with the Board of County Road Commissioners as well. In our view, we specifically stated, and we deeply believe, that the communities that are impacted by any kind of discussion about how this transportation route issue should be discussed, were neighbors long before Kennicott came on the scene, and will be neighbors long after Kennicott chooses to leave, and that as such, because the state and federal issues associated with any kind of permitting or evaluation process haven't fully played out, they haven't reached their course yet, we thought it would be premature at best to suggest either to Kennicott or the road commission that they should change their strategy now. We believe that, and we advised both parties, that we think they should continue to try to work together with the cooperation that they've been able to build so far around the solutions on the table. And if we receive some kind of definitive answer that should force us to change that view, that will address that issue in due time. We also noted that, as a consequence of all these things, we don't view this as necessarily something that the city unilaterally or in any way should bear exclusive responsibility for solving. We mentioned to all parties that the investments we've been making in our community create almost insurmountable challenges for anybody at this point to choose to put any additional industrial hauling through that part of our city. Between the investments we've made in the Nequamenon Trail, which we enjoyed over the course of this last weekend, with the new touristic resources that we're going to have at Tourist Park, with the basin refletted, with the termination of that point at Wright Street, right into the heart of the residential neighborhood that surrounds that area, as well as the dormitories that we have on the university, and the residential area that that is going to be moving through as it reaches towards US 41. There are all kinds of issues on just even a surface level that give people lots to consider when they think about the potential impact and consequences of putting more traffic on that road. In addition to that, we raised, of course, many other points. The Safe Streets Strategy that we've been partnering with the county on to make sure that our four-year-old children can ride safely on that road. The fact that very soon we'll be looking at other road connectivity in that area to address the needs of a growing city. And so consequently, any solution that they would choose to have us take a look at in the future would have to be aware of the fact that Marquette has moved on, that we don't want the character of our city to change. We aren't interested in necessarily doing that unilaterally without the, at least cooperative discussion with our neighbors, and certainly not without consequences for anybody who would propose such activity in our city. So, we know this is raising a lot of anxiety with people. We hear everything people say when they present these things, but we're choosing to take a little bit more demure approach. We don't think the time is really right yet to have to change our strategy simply because the county and Kennicott might be facing maybe a temporary challenge in their discussions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any additional comments to that? Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I might as well give you a slightly different point of view to get the discussion going. I too oppose having trucks going through the city of Marquette if there is any other possibility. To my knowledge, this board has never passed a resolution supporting the mine, as one of the speakers suggested. It has, on two occasions, taken action to encourage that a different road be built. So I think there's no question that this, this board has made its feelings felt very strongly in that regard. I do support the mine. I'll be up very honest about it. I think it's, I think we need it in Marquette County. I think it's gone through the process. I think it's been approved by the Michigan DEQ. It's, there's a, there's a new mining law that's been put in place. Environmental people sat on that discussion. You know, these are the people that we hire in our state to make decisions about these projects. Right now, it's my understanding there are 200 people working there on construction. Many of these people are probably construction workers. These are men and women who need these jobs. And this mine will have a multimillion-dollar impact on this community going forward. So yes, I do support it, but that's not the issue here. One of the issues is, I agree with one other speaker tonight who said you can't build a road. You can't build a railroad. It's almost impossible in this country to do anything today. It just doesn't happen. You know, we get, all the way from Washington to Lansing to all over this country, everybody says, "Jobs, jobs, jobs, we need jobs." As far as I'm concerned, most of it's lip service. The president talks about himself removing restrictions, or lightening up on the agencies, on the way they enforce some of these restrictions. It doesn't happen. You know, it just, it doesn't happen. And as far as I'm concerned, if you want to get something done in this country today, you better take years to try and do it, and have pretty deep pockets, because it's not going to happen. And I know a lot of people disagree with what I'm saying, and I give them the right to do that, but that's the way I feel. As far as this particular issue goes, I hope we can work with Kennicott, or with our neighbors, and that a, and a more viable option can be determined. But I think it has to happen by working together, and not, not pointing fingers at any of the, any of the local units of government, or the company which is trying to get the job done. I, I think the, the federal agencies have made it almost impossible to come up with any other alternative. And if you're going to have an operation, you've got to have a method of transportation, period.
Thank you. Commissioners, Stonehouse?
A little different viewpoint, perhaps. One of the meetings I was at, speaking with the engineers, we were discussing the idea of rail for product, and what had come out of that meeting was how difficult it was to do, because of the expense of the railroad that was really far more expensive than road construction, far more environmentally damaging because of the radius of the curves that had to be made, and the amount of space that was needed. Property acquisition, very difficult. All the rail lines in this country have largely been given up for other purposes, and you just simply can't reacquire them. Plus, as you build the road, the rail... Plus, as you build the road, the railroad, you literally have to have a road next to it because you use that to build the road with and to do the maintenance on. So it becomes very, very difficult. As appealing as it might be, it is a difficult situation. I'll take a little more strident approach on coming through the city, however, than the city manager might and would be prepared to offer a motion to direct the manager to begin to explore and determine what options the city actually has legally that can prevent Kennecott trucks from coming through the heart of our city. And not to do that in a panic mode, but to do it as a way of beginning to get the pre-work done, so if that's a step we have to go to and Kennecott elects to try and force the issue, that we indeed have got a legal recourse to go back on. But, I mean, it's just incredible to believe that they would be, they would try to run those trucks through the heart of our community. You know, in 160-odd years of Cleveland Cliffs mining here, I don't recall any instance where they tried to run haul trucks at any point through a community. That's just absolutely something that is mind-boggling even to make it as a throwaway statement, as I suspect perhaps the Kennecott people may have done. So it's a very serious situation. I'd like everybody to know, again, this commission is taking it very seriously and I don't believe that we would roll over on it just to let these trucks come through. Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was very fortunate last week to be with the city manager, Bill Vida, meeting with Kennecott face-to-face, one-on-one. And he did, the city manager, did stress very strongly his feelings on those mining trucks using the city of Marquette Township and going out onto the US 41 West. I stressed with the project manager and his staff my concerns of those trucks using 550 down to Sugarloaf to Wright Street and heading west into Marquette Township due to the fact that from 550, 510 headed south to Marquette, there are several bus stops where the school bus has to stop to pick up and/or discharge young children. Also, they have to hold that position until the kids are safely across the street and on their own properties. My next concern was when they got to city of Marquette, we had just approved Wright Street from Prescott Isle to Marquette Township, a complete street. Now, a complete street is where you have one road, one lane going west, one lane going east. Now, we threw in a four-foot bike lane with the one thin white lane, four feet from the curb, allowing four- and five-year-old kids to ride on that bike lane. My concern in the past was before the mining company even talked of running their equipment through that area, was the previous trucks now using it, such as your logging trucks and the trucks hauling line. And my safety concern was for rocks in that fall, flying off the tires, hitting some young child in the face or head, and automatically fearing into traffic. Okay, so no, rocks did fly off their tires, but kids have a tendency, if they're riding with their friends, to look back to see how close they are or to speak to them. And that white line would not prevent them from fearing into the traffic lane, possibly getting struck by a motor vehicle. I'm not just saying heavy industrial trucks, it could have been just cars or anything. But to add, this kind of traffic down 550, Sugarloaf, and to, through Wright Street West to Marquette Township is totally unacceptable. And I believe that they did get our message loud and clear. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Schneider?
I really appreciate hearing a lot of the opinions and the concerns about Kennecott trucking everything straight through the Marquette community. I think a lot of the opinions are really valid and really good, even though there's different sides of support on the mine. My opinion that I would like to add to it is Kennecott and its parent company, Rio Tinto, are a multinational corporation that have been accused and found guilty of multiple environmental catastrophes and human rights violations, including murder. I'm hesitant, as a city, to get involved with a company like this, period. I really appreciate the idea of having jobs. We have a background in mining, and I think that's really, really important to pay attention to. But a company like this, I don't think that the city as an entity should enter into very readily and very quickly. So I'm glad to hear a lot of people talking about a concern about the traffic, concern about public safety, concern about the contamination. But I also want to remind the citizens and the rest of the board or the rest of the city commission that this company has had many problems all over the world, and we should be hesitant about entering into relations with them on any level.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Niemi?
I guess the way I look at this is, I think it's kind of ironic and perhaps a little silly when the EPA looks at the environmental damage that might be done to wetlands and other sensitive areas and doesn't let, give as much weight to the environment, the human environment through the city of Marquette in the process. I think partly might be that typically, environmental assessments deal with the environment, there's very often very little impact on humans, but in this case, there is a considerable impact. And I don't think they've given as much weight to that. I think as a city, we do have to protect our citizens, and I would support whatever efforts we have to encourage the, following the original plan of the Woodland Road or County Road 595.
Thank you. Well, you know, many months ago, I partnered with Supervisor Limata from Marquette Township in a joint letter supporting the Woodland Road and then subsequently 595. We did that as two communities, not to say this is support for the mine. We did it because we were supporting the quality of life in our communities. That's what this board is elected to do. You know, I can't fight someone else's battle, but I was elected to represent the people of this community. And that's what I'll continue to do. If it means helping to continue our support of those roads, that's what I'll do, and I think that's what this board should do. Our staff has committed to do that as well. Having said that, you know, I have zero intention of allowing those trucks to rumble through this town. You know, me personally, we'll do everything we can at that point. That, to me, is just not something that's even worth entertaining, to run 80 trucks a day through the heart of Northern Michigan University by residences, by a school, dumping out into the busiest corridor in the UP, cutting through Marquette Township, through Nagani Township, Nagani, Ishbaming, West Ishbaming. I mean, think about it. That has disaster written all over it, and I'll have no part of that. You know, is this a political move? Quite possibly. Are they looking to drum up support? Probably. Are we willing to continue to support? We probably will, but certainly, you know, my position will be and continue to be that we keep the roads and the streets safe and quiet for our residents, period. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Number 10, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding fee relief, promotional fund requests for fiscal year 2010. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at a public hearing of August 9, 2010, the city commission approved a promotional ordinance number 572, which specifies the city would develop funds that would support the city of Marquette and community development opportunities. Promotional funds will be vetted through the annual budget process and will be utilized for the betterment of the municipality. Projects that would promote economic development and tourism and further community development objectives would be considered for fee waivers, in-kind services, and/or cash distributions. The director of community services has reviewed each application based on the objective of the program, a description of how the program will benefit tourism, economic development, or community development within the city. The target audience and level of participation, an itemized list of how the funds would be used, and the financial plan, including expenses and revenues, and percentage of revenues to be reinvested into the city. During the application period, the city received applications for both current and next fiscal years. Applications for the fiscal year will, excuse me, will still be reviewed, dependent upon the budget availability. However, two of the eight applicants were previously supported by the city commission, that being Pigs in Heat and Music in the Park totaling $3,105 of fee relief. Since these events require no further support or services from the city, staff is recommending prompt consideration. Fiscal effects, as these events are unbudgeted in the current fiscal year, $3,105 would be realized as a loss of revenue under the Lakeview Arena and Parks budget. Recommendation, approve the fee relief for Pigs in Heat and Music in the Park in the amount of $3,105. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve fee relief for Pigs in Heat and Music in the Park in the amount of $3,105.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second the motion.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan, any additional comments?
I think these are both cases we've dealt with before and provided support. Certainly, Pigs in Heat has become an outstanding, outstanding program in our community, does a great service, and there's been very strong support for the Music in the Park program as well at Prescott Isle, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Judging by all the good they do, you certainly can only support Pigs in Heat, I think. They do a tremendous job in the community. And really, Music in the Park has worked out very nicely, I think. Number of good public comments on it, doesn't cost the city anything. It's really using something that isn't being used when it's not being used. So valued everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments? I'll just say also, you know, Pigs in Heat is just an incredible event. It's gone on for years and years, and it's a great program, so obviously, we need to support that. And Music in the Park, you know, that's one of those things, we can take it as a budget loss, but really, if we don't waive that fee, they can't conduct it. So it's either don't collect money and don't have music, or don't collect money and have music. So it's, to me, a no-brainer, and they really do a great job, so. With that, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding bids on fire hydrant backflow meters with RPZ. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, currently, hydrant meters are checked out to various users purchasing bulk water from the city. Concerns have increased based upon hydrant damage and failure by users to prevent possible backflow contaminants into the water distribution system. The purchase of six new meters with backflow prevention was approved for capital outlay purchased during the fiscal year 2010-11 budget cycle. With the backflow prevention incorporated into the new meters, the RPZ valve will fall under back pressure and will allow water to dump into the atmosphere instead of back into the city system, thereby preventing contamination. A new procedure will have the city water personnel installing the new meters with backflow prevention at locations requested by the users. The users will then operate a valve on the meter instead of operating the hydrant itself. The program is designed to have city staff be the exclusive operators of the city fire hydrants. Water dispensing can then be in a controlled manner, minimizing potential damage and contamination to the water distribution network. Public notice was not issued. Public work staff identified local suppliers through past performance, and bids were sought for this purchase, with four companies responding. Fiscal effects, a total of $19,200 has been allocated in the fiscal year 2010-11 budget for this purchase. And recommendation, award a bid for six hydrant meters with RPZ backflow prevention to Performance Meter Incorporated of Banning, California, in the amount of $16,800. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we go with the recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner DePietro, second by Commissioner Niemi? I must call you Nemo. Commissioner DePietro?
Just that, the low bid was $6,000 below the other three companies, so I'm sure the service is equal or above, so I'll go with this company. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Niemi?
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12 is a discussion about prevailing wage. Commissioner St. Onze, you asked to have this put on the agenda. Would you like to lead off?
Very good. Thank you, Your Honor. As I understand it, a number of years ago, the city commission that was seated at the time adopted a policy to establish that all construction projects, if you will, greater than $50,000 in contract value would be awarded based on prevailing wage rates. At our strategic budget session with the city staff last week, I brought this issue up. We commonly talk about the opportunity to take advantage of the current economic situation when we talk about taking on projects. And many of the commissioners repeatedly state that one of the justifications for taking on these projects is because of the current economic climate and the competitiveness, if you will, of those who are bidding on the projects. Well, last time I checked, the economy is still not the best, and it serves as a double standard to encourage projects to be undertaken, when in fact, we are, in essence, overvaluing the contract by requiring it to be prevailing wage. I'd like to see us, and I'm willing to make this motion, but before to make the motion, I'd like to get comment. And then what I'd like to do is really rescind that policy and allow the laws of supply and demand to dictate what the value of these construction projects are and no longer self-impose a prevailing wage requirement. In some projects, certainly, that are being funded at the state level or the federal level, there are requirements for prevailing wage. And I'm not proposing that we would try to modify that or in any way change our strategic approach in how we get those projects funded. But where we control the project, where we are using city taxpayer dollar, it doesn't make, I have a hard time justifying, being a fiduciary here, of the taxpayers' money to pay more for a contract than what we need to under the simple laws of supply and demand. So I'm certainly curious as to everyone's opinion, but I'd love to see us, and I think the economic conditions of the day warrant, that we rescind the active policy of requiring prevailing wage for contracts in excess of $50,000. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
Not so much discussion, but I think that this is one of those issues that probably should be on an agenda that people see in advance before we take any action on it. There clearly are people who have opinions on this, and I don't know what they all are. And I would be a lot more comfortable hearing, you know, what's on people's minds before we act on something like this.
Commissioner Schneider?
I would like to echo Don Ryan's comments on that. I would like to know more of what the public thinks about that. That being said, I'd That being said, I do support the idea of Commissioner St. Ange with opening that up for supply and demand. I like that idea, but I would like to hear from the public a bit more.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'd like to see actually a report on it, and I'm not trying to push it away, but I really would like to have some hard information on it, because I know with the Federals' requirements when federal dollars come in, prevailing wage, I think there's another set of standards that apply for the state, as you alluded to, Commissioner St. Ange. I'd like to know when exactly the Commission made that decision in terms of our paying prevailing wage, just so we have the full data laid out in front of us, and perhaps even some breakdown that would indicate what the prevailing wage payment we made, yeah, what the prevailing wage we paid was at a given time, and what we think the savings would be if we were not paying prevailing wage. Just so we have some hard data, some hard information points that we can look at, and certainly also echoing Commissioner Schneider and Ryan, the public really deserves, I think, a chance to weigh in on this and to chew it over, too. But certainly support a full discussion. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Could I ask the City Manager, or I'm sorry, the City Attorney? Would there be any problems if we addressed this down the road? I mean, the issue itself, prevailing wage?
You mean whether you reconsidered the policy?
Yes.
At a later meeting? Yet another meeting, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was the impression I was getting from the comments, that it's one of these things that's added to a meeting, and there's really not a lot of background or information to... And as Commissioner Ryan, I think, said, that probably there's some public out there who would want to comment on it. So I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to hear your thoughts on that. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Just I wonder if I could ask Keith Whittington. Keith, do we in fact do this?
We do in fact do this for anything over $50,000, correct?
Because there were some projects where I kind of wondered if that was the case, but...
Anything over $50,000.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm going to agree that I think we really have a responsibility to look at the background, look at it from a legal aspect, how bond or federal grant funding, or as the project we talked about tonight, SRF and DWRF, if those are requirements, and then if one person, one company's bidding a road job, and, you know, that's included, but, you know, maybe the street surface isn't. I think those are things that we need to look at, Commissioner St. Ange, but I applaud you for bringing it up. Perhaps a motion to have city staff prepare an agenda item to inform us on all that, maybe in order?
I certainly don't have any problem going on a fact-finding mission with regard to relevant data on this issue. I brought it up at our session, I think it has merit, I think there are some reasonable applications where the city is, in essence, overpaying for what it needs to pay for. But I concur with everyone. My purpose in bringing it up tonight was not to surprise everybody and ramrod it down the commission's throat, quite the opposite. It's important to bring it up, because it seems like if we don't bring things up, they're not going to find their way on the agenda. So I'm asking for this to be vetted some more. I'm hoping, quite honestly, that we don't study it to death, that we do so in a timely fashion. We are in the process of contemplating contract award here during the upcoming construction season, so I think it's imperative that we prudently do this. And at the same time, though, inasmuch as I agree with many of the comments, I would defend city staff that it's probably almost impossible, I'm not sure how you would do that, but almost impossible to quantify, within reason, how much money you spent over and above a contract that wouldn't, if it wasn't prevailing wage. I think that might be a challenge to come up with a number. But having said that, I agree with the concept, and I agree with the vetting process, and I would certainly be willing to make a motion to ask staff to compile a brief evaluation, if you will, for us to consider at our next meeting.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Commissioner Neme?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
All right. Any additional discussion, Commissioner St. Ange?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Neme?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we are back to public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. Please again state your name and address for the record.
Ava Miller, 701 West Hampton Street, Marquette. And I'm actually quite pleased that I was interrupted and was able to continue, because there've been some other comments that came up that really triggered a few more thoughts. So thank you. One of them was about the railway, and about the expense of a railway and the additional road, but most of the railway is already there. The LS&I line can be used. So that, but there will have to be some addition to that at each end, but most of that railway is already existing, so. And the two other roads that are already existing and in a state of repair are also options. So I'm very, very worried about this Rio Tinto, who is now partially owned by China, who, and China has the worst mining record on earth. And going through that pristine area, and I like to read a quote put out by the United Nations. "On May 10th, 2010, the United Nations warned that massive loss of life-sustaining natural environments was likely to deepen to the point of being irreversible after global targets to cut the decline by this year were missed. One of the three potential tipping points mentioned in the United Nations report was water, especially freshwater lakes and rivers." This road and the Kennicott Mine are on the watershed for Lake Superior, one of the remaining freshwater lakes, and it's predicted that future wars will be fought over water, not oil. So we have a chance here to make sure we have some control on something. And Kennicott is, Flambo Mine is being, had a lawsuit slapped on it for pollution. This is their flagship mine that is now being, yes, here it is. "A lawsuit involving the Flambo Mine for its water pollution has been filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Wisconsin, under the Clean Water Act Citizen Suit provision. That does not bode well for Eco Minerals Mine. Flambo is supposed to be a great example of pollution, but it's that, I'm sorry, supposed to be a good example of a mine, but the pollution is still spreading. And I'm very worried, because Rio Tinto has a horrible reputation for an environmental and human rights damage that it has caused. At a shareholders' meeting in London, England," here it is, "Andrew Hickman, a shareholder, criticized the practice of dumping tailings, water-containing waste minerals and chemicals directly into rivers at the Grasberg Mine in a remote forest region in Indonesia. Rio Tinto holds a major stake in that mine, one of the world's largest copper and gold deposits." And get this, Rio Tinto's representative, Mr. Skinner, said, this is what his answer? There was no process to dispose of the tailings, so they dumped them in the water. This is in the minutes of the shareholders' report. That's what we're dealing with. We need to keep an eye on this company. And that we're, I'm also very concerned, because Rio Tinto already caused so much environmental damage at other mining sites around the world, so much so that in 2008, the government of Norway sold all but substantial holdings in this unethical mining company. The Norwegian Government Pension Fund's Advisory Council on Ethics said that it had, in line with common practice, sent a letter to Rio Tinto in December of 2007, outlining its concerns, but the company's response was judged unsatisfactory. There is no sign that the company's practices will change in the future, nor that measures will be taken to significantly reduce the damage caused to nature and the environment." That was the quote. So that's why I'm so worried about this company, building a new road through the area of more than just mosquitoes and frogs, it's our watershed. And we live in a beautiful area, Marquette is wonderful, I've only been here five years, and I love it here. And I'm an outdoors person, and I'm in heaven in this area, and it's tourism, great, all that stuff is great. I think that's where we need to focus. And if there's any way I can stop this mine, I would. So, thank you so much. And in closing, please encourage the other elected officials that you deal with to insist on other options, and, you know, maybe Kennicott will go away. Actually, maybe they could start recycling, that would be even better. And please do not support the building of a new road, far more is at stake than we know. Thank you so much for your time.
Wow, you hit five minutes on the button. Nice timing, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Catherine Parker, West Ohio Street, again. The first line of the Endangered Species Act says, "Various species of fish, wildlife, and plants in the United States have been rendered extinct as a consequence of economic growth and development untempered by adequate concern and conservation. There has been talk amongst local officials about, quote, 'opening up Western Marquette County to economic development by bisecting the wilderness with a new county road,' not a winding country lane, as was falsely depicted on a certain mining company's website, but one designed with large ore trucks in mind. The original Woodland Road would have crossed through the headwaters and wetlands of four watersheds, posing significant risk to water and wildlife. The county road 595 corridor straddles the same route and was never more than a thinly veiled attempt by Rio Tinto to get its haul road built, most recently under the auspices of the County Road Commission. It has been an open secret that local officials in Kennicott expected federal regulators to relax their standards when dealing with a public as opposed to a private road, but that has not been the case. Although Rio Tinto has announced it is no longer interested, county officials are intent on lobbying the EPA for approval of the Woodland Road slash County Road 595, sending off a letter in haste asking them to, quote, 'start moving on it.' Is it appropriate for our local officials to be pressuring the EPA to ignore the law? Nearly three-fourths of the original wetlands area in our state, an estimated 11 million acres, has been destroyed. It is not in the public's best interest to adopt a cavalier attitude toward what remains. The Road Commission, under pressure from city, county, and township officials, continues to press forward with plans for County Road 595, despite the absence of a funding source and shrinking transportation dollars. Sixty-one percent of Marquette County Road Commission roads need repairs, 380 miles at a cost of $160 million. Under current funding, only 68 miles of roads can be fixed per year. Additionally, 52 out of 94 Marquette County Road Commission bridges need work, and according to the Road Commission, it would take $40 million to repair or replace them. As Jim O'Anneke himself said, road funding is at a breaking point. Why then aren't our local officials directing their lobbying efforts towards maintaining the roads we already have, while protecting the environment and community we cherish? Mayor Keevila has said that it is his duty and that of the commissioners to support quality of life in this community. I don't believe that community stops at the city limits. The woods, water, wetlands, and wildlife that surround us are what make this place special, they sustain us." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Jeff Verido, 350 East Red Street, Marquette, Michigan. These are my opinions. Thank you very much to those two previous speakers, you said it so eloquently. December 13th, we observed again how you divert public attention off the issues, and how you treat the public differently based upon who said what, rather than the validity of what is said. The positive things I say blow right by you, such as the beauty of our city, our public Lakeshore, the new manager, and the competence of our city staff. You forget these meetings are recorded. May the public remember that I've always wanted the public record delved into, while you desperately have not. December 13th, a member alleged my closing comment exceeded the time limit by 20 seconds. Although there's no reason to disbelieve him, he suggested after the meeting that my comments routinely exceed the limit, which is untrue, because the comments are timed prior to the meetings. I previously asked him when our time officially begins. He in turn asked me when I felt the time should begin. We agreed the time begins after our addresses, because giving our addresses recently became mandatory and are not part of the comment. Instead, he began our time from the citizen's first utterance. When confronted, he said the address accounted for only some of the excess 20 seconds, however, the fact remained that he didn't start the time when he said he would. Despite my belief and adhering to the generous time limits, no issue was ever made of the time limit until a second citizen began speaking out against you, and we know that not many citizens are waiting to speak, so the time dedicated to citizen comment is seldom an issue. Does courteous members have caused time-consuming interruptions by not paying adequate attention, which is your fault? The mass majority of my comments end on time, and I've never once intended to exceed the limit. It's odd you started to enforce the limit on citizens who are critical of you, when others were previously allowed to ramble on. Another recent example of how you treat different citizens differently occurred when a member accused me of attacking the audience. He misused me to divert attention off the key issues in order for him to appear citizen-oriented. You're hearing a subjective to the point that you never realized that the one citizen habitually commented on my comments first, which the record will attest. This was the easiest problem you could have ever nipped in the bud, a year ago, had you simply allowed no other speaker to allude to me during their comments. Otherwise, they have their full opportunity to compliment you to their heart's content. You're also aware of two board members who've recently harassed me after our meetings. The November 29th incident is on record, which led to the accused member's alleged attempts to restrict our free speech rights on December 13th. After that meeting, as I spoke to one member in a constructive manner about how we might reach an understanding, a second member barked at me out of the blue, stating that he doesn't care what I think. You were your own witnesses to this unprovoked instigation. You toss around terms like courtesy and standards of conduct hypocritically. You're advised to change the word courteous in your rules to the word reasonable, and to practice your own rules. Demonstrate courtesy by lending the consideration to those who prepare comments and address public concerns that warrant responses. Your closing comments of December 13th indicate that you're more concerned with the public's perception of you than you are with the issues we raise or in upholding a democracy. Recently, you brought attention to the copies of historic documents on the east wall, yet as you demonstrated, you'll defend yourselves ahead of protecting the fundamentals upon which this country was founded. Your blaming of citizens diverts attention from more important issues like your drownings, your board loading, your utilization of tax dollars to fight against us on unnecessary legal situations like the Blaker Tower, and your endorsements of the mining road that wouldn't even be in our city limits, for a company that now faces a lawsuit over its closed mine in Ladysmith. I'd considered no longer appearing here on account of the small audience, which is generally present only for specific items, and also for not being sure how many people are watching at home. But the people's attorney watched the December 13th meeting. Just as important as him offering his help to assure that you uphold our free speech rights, is the fact that residents are still watching.
Good evening, Yermaulchan, 8 Market Drive. 200th century, 1900, gentleman by the name of Edison came up with this neat thing called electricity. 1914, cash register was built, either electric or manual, and the reason for that was because electricity might not ever go anywhere. Well, guess what? We have an entire infrastructure of poles throughout the country, throughout the world. We enjoy the benefits of those inventions, and the people that, the naysayers, are enjoying the automobiles, are enjoying the infrastructure, the water and sewer, the roads, and all the good... the water and sewer, the roads, and all the good things that come with entrepreneurship in our country. There has to be free enterprise. There's a give and take. We can't say no, 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 no. It just does not work. We could not run this city, and the commissioners could not run the city if every word was no, no, no. We all enjoy the good things that happen with the advance of communication, advance of electricity, the advance of mining, the advance of nickel, the advance of copper. I venture to say that there is not a single individual in the audience, and very few in our community, that drive their horse and buggies back and forth to work. They all have 30 to 40 pounds of copper in their automobile. They use their cell phones. They use their computers, and all the good things that we have in life. There has to be alternatives, and there are solutions, and we need to work on solutions to make our lives continue the way we are used to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move to Commissioner's comments, and we'll start on my right. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to congratulate fallen city employees on their anniversary within their department. On February 4th, Randy Pavla, who is a heavy equipment operator in the Public Works, will have 20 years. On February 5th, Jim Compton, who is a certified hydrology and civil engineer, will have 10 years of service in the engineering department. February 6th, Amanda Forsland, who is the city zoning code enforcement officer, will have five years of service. And on February 10th, Lieutenant Dean Mello of the Market Fire Department will have 20 years of service. Again, we thank these employees on their anniversary within our department. Congratulations go out to all the prominent ski marathon participants, the committee members, volunteers, businesses, and fans who helped support the largest group of skiers to participate in this event. With sunny skies and large crowd on hand to cheer the skiers from Ishbrun to Marquette, fun was had by all. Again, we like to thank the skiers, committee members, volunteers, businesses, and fans. This support is such a huge and great event for Marquette County. I'd also like to remind the public of the upcoming UP 200 with the sled dog race scheduled to start on Friday, February 18th at 7:10 p.m. Also, there will be many other pre-race activities on Wednesday, February 16th, Thursday, February 17th, with the UP 200 committee members looking for volunteers to help during this time. You can also check the www-up200.org. Look for Corey Bullman to sign up to participate in this great community event. Also, I'd like to congratulate again Pam Christiansen and her staff for receiving that national award for Peter White Public Library, outstanding job. And I'd also would like to ask the city manager, during city manager's comment, if he would give his community hours at the Peter White Public Library for the public to circle their calendar. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
You know, I kind of love the corny old sayings because I think they so often are true. And I'm thinking about, you know, from Acorn, a Mighty Oak Rose. I can remember sitting in my office when I was working for Cleveland Cliffs, and I was trying to confer with Commissioner Stonehouse to get an idea of how, what annual no-caymanon this might have been, so I could kind of put a time perspective on it, but I can't. But I can recall, and I know John Momarts was one of the guys, and I believe Bob Mahaney, you know, they had this idea, and I know there were others involved, so I don't want to, you know, I wish I had all the names, but those are two I know, who came to see me. And they had this idea for a ski race, and it was going to take cooperation by a lot of companies, a lot of landowners, and a lot of work on the part of a lot of people. And, you know, it worked. You know, and so often I talk about the fact that many of the good things in our community happen because people make them happen. And this is just such an example. You know, and they went through growing pains. I know they got involved at one point with the Lake Superior Community Partnership to help them with some of their planning and promotion and bookkeeping and that kind of stuff. Well, they focused on, you know, the important aspects, the skiing and the trail development and all the rest of it. And as we look at what it's grown into, it's just amazing. But again, it started because a few people, you know, a small group of people had an idea that here, you know, we could do something that would rival the Burkabiner and over in Wisconsin and some of the other big ski races in this country. And now we have it. And again, it's because some people made it happen. And I certainly want to congratulate all of those people and all of those who have come along in succeeding years to help it grow and help it become such a great event, not only for the city of Marquette, but for Marquette County and central Upper Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, certainly a very productive meeting tonight. I think a number of things thrown on the table and wrestled with, and as we move into the future, certainly we'll continue, we will be continuing certainly to deal with them. They're not going to go away. Little piece of interesting happy news. This is the current issue of Lake Superior Magazine. Marquette's breakwater is featured in it during a November storm, and in the interest of full disclosure, the bride in the picture is my niece. So, again, nice accolade for Marquette to be so considered. Also, an article in here that deals with a sense of place, of which Marquette is part of that discussion, why people are here and why, what they do. And another little vignette coming out of that article that talks about all of the awards the city's received in the last 10 years or so. So it's a good article, I think, and a good magazine. Take a look through and get a little bit more appreciation for not only Marquette, but certainly all of the communities around this great lake we call Superior. Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the Burk, or the no-caymanon is the, I think it's the 24th no-caymanon, somewhere along that line. It's been around quite a while. I was surprised at the number of years that it's been here. It is an exceptional race and brings 1,200 people to our community. I think I'd also like to point out that the, you know, we've got kind of symbiotic relationship. We talked about the downtown, downtown tonight and how the downtown's grown, and I think both, both kind of feed on each other. The, certainly these big events certainly benefit the downtown, but I think the fact that we've got such a nice and vibrant downtown draws some of these events and make these premier events for those people who keep coming year after year to them. And I think we're just fortunate to live in a community that does those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
In the interest of time, I don't have much to say. I think much of what I would like to say, especially about the no-cay, has already been said. So, thank you, guys.
Commissioner St. Anj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would certainly like to remind citizens that it is that time of the year again when we are embarking on the formation of the next fiscal year budget. It is a lengthy process. Certainly, there's lots of input, and there's lots of things to consider. And it's always good to get citizen input where and when that's possible, so that when we come to the citizens, I believe in April, if I remember my timeframes correctly, we have a budget that works, and it works in the interests of the community as a whole. So if you have the inclination to participate in that process, you are certainly reminded and encouraged to do so. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. And I'm just going to, you know, get on the bandwagon about the no-cay. You know, Don, you're entirely correct. It's the people behind it more than anything else. And, you know, to put an event like that on takes so much work from so many people, and they just come out of the woodwork and volunteer. And it's much like this Superior Bike Fest event that we have in the summer, same thing. I mean, that's put us on the map. You know, certainly the sled dog race is coming up 18th, 19th, 20th, I believe, of this month is another such event. And I think within the next few years, the acorn that was planted last year was the Marquette Marathon. I'm waiting for that to take off. Other than that, Commissioner Stonehouse alluded to the article regarding the awards that Marquette's received in Lake Superior Magazine. They called me and asked for some quotes about that, but just found out we got another one, I think, yesterday or the day before. U.S. News and World report, 10 winter wonderlands for retirees. And I think we're number six on the list, so I just keep rolling in. So, with that, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I address Commissioner DePietro's request, I'd just like to have our Assistant City Manager Carl Zuger just take a quick minute to describe the city open house that we're planning for the middle of February.
Thank you. This is something that'll be posted on the website as well as Channel 21. We have flyers throughout the city. You'll see that on all the entryways to City Hall as well as their other city facilities. We're planning on having two sessions, one in the morning and then one in the afternoon, in which the city departments will provide sort of an informational and educational process in which they will have displays of what we do and the services that we provide. We'll also have partners that, critical partners that we have in the city, and it's an opportunity for the community to come out and see not only the people that do the good work in the city, but also see some of the equipment that we use to provide the services. And so we encourage everyone to be out, and that's February 10th. And we'll have a noon time open house, and then we'll also have an evening session, and you can check out the details both online and on Channel 21. So, thank you for giving me that opportunity. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Also, our community office hours this month are going to be February 9th. We're changing it up a little bit. We're going to have it from 2 to 4 because we're hoping to encourage schoolchildren, maybe, who have an interest in learning more about what their community does, to come down and have a chat with us. Also, to get an opportunity for us to hear about good ideas they might have about things they'd like to see here as well. So, again, that'll be February 9th. That's next Wednesday, and it'll be from 2 to 4 in the community conference room in Peter White where we've been having it so far.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.